And pledge, and if you'll please stand with me. And bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for everything you've given us. It was such a beautiful day, and it reminds us how blessed we are to live in such a wonderful city and a community. Thank you all the blessings you've given us. Please be with the board members tonight and staff as we have to make decisions for the city, guide and direct us, in Jesus's name I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
I'll second that, Mayor, but Commissioner Sutton, I noticed on New Business A, it's assigned to Commissioner Sutton, and he's not going to be, Vice Mayor Sutton, he's not going to be here tonight, so I don't know if we need to remove that one or not.
Is there anything y'all wanted to report that we need to keep it, or should we wait?
I can get you a brief update and let you know where we are, and I can do that now, or after you.
Do you want to do that and just defer it, or just wait for him? Either way?
Well, if C-Manager has something he wants to share, that's fine, but...
Nothing of substance, just an update, so I can do it under my business.
We'll just remove it. Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Third item, citizens' comments.
Mayor, there are no citizens' comments tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Public announcements?
Skip awards and recognition.
Oh, I did. Looked them down. Okay, rewards and a recognition, do we have anything? Okay. Now we'll move on down to public announcements, and we already know there's not any. Item six, staff comments, and we'll go ahead and, I guess, start with Mr. Doherty.
Thank you, Mayor. The only item I wanted to announce tonight, I emailed it out today, is that we did receive budget approval for 2015, 2017 fiscal year budget from the State Controll's office, and that was emailed out. I know some of you already have it, but I wanted, I sent it out to all the BLC members today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Hall, do you have anything? In coats?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Chair has been super busy taking building permits. We're getting several of those coming and going right now. I've actually been in two meetings this past, within the past five days about possibly another subway coming to our fair city. It's gonna be at the interstate, but the good thing about that is it's gonna be 9,000 square feet, they're only gonna take up 1,500. So hopefully we'll be getting some more. One building will be 4,500 by itself, the others will be 1,500 each. So hopefully that, and that's out by the interstate on the opposite side from Flying J. And it was also in another conversation with a developer on a possible another 300-lot subdivision coming. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chief O'Neill, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Just a reminder of the Tucker Truck event, October 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00, and we did get a confirmation that the sheriffs probably have their helicopter out there as well, as long as the weather holds off. And if anybody's been trying to call the fire hall, we're not receiving calls right now, we're having some telephone issues, so we're trying to address those now, we just didn't want people to think we're ignoring them. That's it.
Okay, so obviously if it's an emergency, call 911, or stop by. Chief Smith, do you have anything tonight? Okay, great. Okay, and then we'll go ahead, Mr. Paisley.
Just announcing Fall Fun Day this Saturday from 10:00 to 3:00. And also, the Friends of the Nature Park have a box for torn or tethered American flags, if you guys would like to drop them off, it's at the Nature Center.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's everybody. We'll move on. Item seven, approval of the minutes, and we will go to eight, the consent agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yes.
Before you start with the regular agenda, just want to remind the board that you're short two members tonight, so anything that is gonna be passed will have to have unanimous approval.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, and then new business, we removed A, gonna put that back on the agenda for the next meeting, B, discuss and take action on approval of a bid for camera access system. Chief Smith.
Do you all have copies of that, the bids? We received four, two of them range from $40,000 to $30,000, and the other two are close with each other around $13,000. The larger amounted ones, the $40,000 bid consists of changing everything, just going through the whole building and changing everything out, that's not necessary. A lot of the equipment down there is still usable, so we're only replacing part of what we need. The best, or the cheapest bid is through Edutec, which is $13,173, that's with two options, we need a camera and a separate database for the interview room. Law enforcement doesn't do interviews anymore unless they're recorded, that's just the way we do business now. So the $30,000 bid has an over-the-top server, it's unnecessary, we don't need all the memory that's required in that, in that bid. Am I missing anything, Sessi? Am I missing anything? It's just that they're replacing everything.
Right, they're replacing everything, they also did not meet the requirements, there was a piece that they left out.
The server, correct, was it the server?
Oh, it did not, that one did not have a option for the interview room.
Okay.
They didn't even give us a license to be able to put a camera in there.
Okay.
And this one does not include a server.
Okay, so Edutec is pretty much the one we're looking at.
Yes.
Also, this is not just surveillance equipment, this is card, door readers, access cards, and the database to store, now you can know who came in, what door, when, and what time.
And so what's the one that you're recommending?
Edutec, with the option.
Okay, and the cost on that again?
It is $13,173.
Okay.
That's with the option. Without, it's $12,463.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Got a first and second, any discussion? Yes.
Yes, please. How do we intend to pay for this?
Facilities, the facilities fund?
Sir?
Facilities fund?
Facilities fund. That square with you, Mr. CFO?
Yes, Commissioner, we've well ahead of schedule on facilities fund this year. We've already brought in 82.2% of our expected revenue for the year in the first three months. I feel like we're, that's probably the most equitable place to go, stay out of general fund dollars, and we have no way of missing this year's note or next year's note in the facilities fund.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mayor.
As far as the facilities fund, the only concern I have is because it's not like upkeep of the building, is there, Mr. Cantrell, proper use of the money? I guess it can be like locks, or...
Yeah, if it's attached to the real property, becomes part of the real property, then it's enough to keep the facility.
Okay. And Mr. Collins, did you have any thought?
No, ma'am, I agree. To Mr. Doherty, I went over this today, and I have no question that it's qualifying expense under that, under that line.
Okay, go ahead.
Chief, does this actually give you what you're needing right now?
Yes.
Okay, because I know when you were, when you were here the first time, and we was talking about getting bids, there was some issue with maybe some software or server, but does this fix that issue as well?
This will fix all of that. I know one question was if the cheaper bids were gonna use a cloud system, and no, they just have a specific server for video surveillance, so it's not that costly, but this will take care of what we need. My main concern is the interview room.
Okay, now, my only question is, we have had a tendency sometimes to buy a fix that didn't have a lot of forethought, this will, how long do you expect this to carry us before we would need to improve the system?
This comes, I think, with six more options for licenses?
This has the option that we can actually add an additional five cameras to it, and multiple door cards. This particular bid currently is adding two door cards, one for the outside of this bill, of this door, and then another one for the outside door downstairs that does not have one, so this does have the option of being upgraded. And it also, as with any software, periodically you have to do updates, and that was a problem with the old system, they were never done prior to, many years ago, that we can keep it more up-to-date.
Okay. Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, review suspension of City Ordinance 11603, discharge a firearm for the Westwood Elementary School, Chief Smith.
When I submitted this for the agenda, I could've chose a little better language, we don't need to suspend anything. It's discretionary, pretty much on my part. The PTO from Westwood Elementary have gone out of their way to make this a safe environment. They have a dirt berm with hay bales that'll be on top. Lieutenant Sutton went out and inspected the site, and he said it's, it'll do fine. They will have safety officers on the range. The shotguns are limited to 20-gauge, nine, number nine shot, so it's a very small shot that they'll be using out there. It's on private property, it's not city property, they will have insurance, and that's basically it, we're just, at those dates, I don't know if you have the dates there, but there are three sep, three separate weekends, two days each, that they'll be discharging firearms in the city limits.
Okay, and is this for an event they are hosting?
Yes, it's a fundraiser for the PTO. I guess this is just more informational than...
Yeah.
There's no need to go into suspending any city ordinances.
Okay, so do we need to take a vote, then? Yes.
Things that concern me, Chief already answered one of them. First thing was what type firearms were they gonna be used, because it's a lot easier to pertain the projectiles from shotguns than it is from high-powered rifles. Second thing is, and he answered that too, was that it's on private property. My concern if it's on school property is most of the schools belong, the property belongs to the county, and the county should be notified. My last two statements are, if some enterprise is putting this on, and they've got insurance, the city needs to be provided with a copy of the insurance certificate, naming the city as an additional insured. The second thing in that line is, and I'm pretty sure probably is, but needs to be checked and verified with TML, that our TML insurance would, would still cover the city in the event something happened because, before it happens. And my last statement is, I looked at that ordinance, and that ordinance does need to be revised primarily for two reasons. You might have some of this on city property at some time, and I could find no precedence for suspending ordinances. This commission can adapt an ordinance, they can repeal the ordinance, they can amend the ordinance, but there is no provision for verbally repealing it. What I would like to do, it wouldn't interfere with what he's talking about, because I would like to bring back at the next meeting, a revision of 11603 primarily in two areas. Number one, the ordinance states a fine of $250 for an offense, and it doesn't matter what I think, the State Supreme Court, in the case of Chattanooga versus Davis, says that if you don't have a jury trial, you can't have more than a $50 fine, so that's surplusage, we need to change that to $50, because our court would have a jurisdiction to levy anything else. The second thing is, that I would like to break this down into requiring non-discharging, as it does now, of firearms in the city limits, with a B provision that says the provisions of Section A would not apply if the event or whatever was happening was approved by the, by the Board of Commissioners. So that way you would have, if some club wanted to, and it was on city property right now, you couldn't do it, and I wouldn't want you to be in a position of, it's dangerous to suspend something when you can find no precedence for it. It's not dangerous to amend the ordinance, and I'd like to do that and put it in proper perspective and bring it back to you. Hasn't, I have a problem with Chief's proposal, I'd just like to be sure that TML's checked with on the insurance, and that the insurance certificate is filed with the city like we require with everything else.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Well, I'm not sure what we're doing.
Well, I mean to discuss, we hadn't said anything yet, it's just been...
When I, when I first started this, I thought we were gonna have to suspend that, but then further research into this is really not required.
You're not, you're not required to vote on this.
Okay, so I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's your question.
Commissioner Crutcher?
No, I was just gonna say, I don't...
I know they used to hold turkey shoots out there some time ago, same location.
Where are they doing it?
At the Lions baseball field.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay.
So I think it's that Williamson County's, a school system required them to have an umbrella of insurance for this event.
And so really, really, it's not a matter of suspending anything, it's just a matter of we're, we're just not, not enforcing the existing ordinance for this particular event.
What I think should, when is your first date for shooting, Chief?
October 29th and the 30th, if my memory serves.
We will have a meeting before then, the ordinance will be filed in proper form, where you can do what you need to do. You could go ahead and approve this tonight, since it's on there, that way, subject to the ordinance being introduced. Once the ordinance is introduced, this is not a zoning ordinance, it's a routine policing ordinance, does not require public hearing, but does require publication of the ordinance in the newspaper. I'll have, I'll have, I'll have the ordinance to record it tomorrow, and when they do the next one, they can run the ordinance with the agenda, and then once you consider it on first reading, you'll be fined with your approval contention upon that, because then you fall into the legislation pending doctrine, and you'll have the authority to do that, because it would be, it will be pending before they ever have an issued, so you'll be, you'll be squared.
And what were the two things that you were gonna change in the existing ordinance?
In the existing ordinance, I'm gonna leave, excuse me, I'm gonna leave the part in there about non-discharging the firearms in the city limits. I'm gonna change the $250 fine to $50, because State Supreme Court says you can't do that, and I'm gonna give the Board of Commissioners the authority to have Section A not apply, if someone applies for an event and it's approved by the Board of Commissioners. That way you can legally suspend the ordinance, I found no precedence for verbally suspending the ordinance. I'll get that to you, you get it approved on first reading, and then you have the doctrine of pending legislation, and you, you'll be fined.
Because we have a meeting on the 20th, and this is the, the first shoot is the 29th, did you say?
29th and 30th.
So, yeah, we would be able to, you'll have, your next meeting will be before then, and if, if, you'll have to have two readings of the ordinance, but if the legislation's pending, State Supreme Court says that's all right.
All right. So what does the motion need to say legally? What do we need to say?
That you're gonna approve it, that you're going to approve what the Chiefs asked for, subject to amending the ordinance.
So move. Second.
Okay, got a first and second, discussion, did you have anything to add, Mr. Collins? Okay. Any other discussion? So if this is not necessary, then why do we need to change, change the ordinance? Have we, we have the...
It would not necess, be necessary probably for this one, because it's not, it's on private property.
Okay.
But if you had one that was in the city, and you had the best charitable organization, then this may be the best one in the country, but I'm not, I'm not into that discussion.
Okay.
But just so you'll have the...
Well, and also the jurisdictional issue needs to be changed anyway, over the fine.
Right, you can't, you can't impose the fine that's in there.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, discuss and take action on Resolution 10-16, a resolution amending the suspending resolution of 1015 and adopting a policy for the city of Fairview, Tennessee regarding the making open to the public television recording and posting for reviewing meetings of the Board of Commissioners and/or other bands represented of the city of Fairview, subject to the provision of Tennessee Open Meeting Act, codified at Tennessee Code 844-101 ET sequence, Mr. Collins? That was a harder one.
I'll try to be brief, and thank you, Mayor, Members of Commission. What I have before you tonight is, obviously, everything, all the meetings that would apply to the Open Meetings Act, including all of our boards, Board of Commissioners, Planning Commissions, Zoning Board of Adjustments, all of those are subject to the Open Meetings Act, and there's obviously every intent of the city to follow through with, with the obligation of meeting those. What this does is provide that the city would record and televise the, or televise in, when they act, the Board of Commissioners meeting, the Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting, and the Planning Commission meetings, for meetings in which there's going to be action taken or other, other votes of substance being taken. For meetings such as work sessions that I may request with the Board of Commissioners, or work sessions that may be requested of the Planning Commission where there are no votes, there are no, there are official actions taken, they're simply advisory or informational, then they would be open to the public and advertised as they should be in every way subject to the Open Meetings Act, they just simply would not be televised or rebroadcast. They would be open to the public, they just would not be televised or rebroadcast. The meetings where votes or official actions take place would be televised or, and rebroadcast, I believe on YouTube, and that's what I have for you tonight, it's just the amendment that does that. It makes meetings where votes or official actions are taking place televised and rebroadcast, meetings or advisory meetings, work sessions that are not subject to votes taking place or official actions taking place, would simply be open to the public through standard advertisement.
Okay. Do we have a motion for discussion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, got a first and second for discuss, or opening the floor for discussion. I just had a question about, does this, what would this do to, like, park board, tree board? Where do they fall in?
They wouldn't be treated as, they're, they're all advisory, so they would be open to the public, advertised as any other public meeting, they just would not be televised or rebroadcast. Other than that, they would be handled with any other public meeting and any other notifications.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor, I had a conversation with the City Manager about this a while back, and, you know, I had, and it was after we had actually had one of these workshops, and I will, I'll say that I think sometimes we get in these workshops, and the idea behind having a workshop is for us to come in and be able to engage in dialogue and have a free flow of ideas, and sometimes when things are being broadcast on television or recorded and replayed, I think that sometimes puts a chilling effect on that. And I know my goal, and one of the things that I campaigned on, and that I'll continue to make sure that we do, is that we be transparent, but at the same time, I think this is a work session or a workshop is something that the public can come and certainly sit in on. And we're not in any way stopping that, and we can't stop that due to the Open Meetings Act, but at the same time, I think it would be nice for us to not have the pressure that we may feel politically, for, if some of us feel that way, and can share ideas freely, and not being worried about saying something that may sound silly and being broadcast on television or are recorded and reused in the future. I think this would benefit us, because I think sometimes we get up here and discussions become political banter, instead of really focusing on the issue at hand and trying to find a solution, and us putting our heads together and, and, you know, working through problems, because we may not, we may not, or we may be concerned about what we say or how what we say is perceived. So this is something, if it's just limited to workshops, and we don't abuse the process by calling more workshops than what we've ordinarily had, it's something that I'm in favor of, because I don't think it's, it's in any way restrictive, and I think that it still allows the public to come, but again, for the reasons I've already stated, I think it would just allow us to be able to communicate with one another and not have, to remove some of the politics from it.
Our, for me, I, from coming outside here, I, you should be commended for the level of effort that you put into transparency. There's a, there, I was wholly surprised coming here at the effort and the true effect that that has, there's no question about that, and I think this continues this. It also gives you, as Commissioner Crutcher mentioned, the ability amongst yourselves and for me, to have true work sessions where we can get together and do, we want to be open, we want to be to the public, but we're at a point where we need to work in time, and I think when things get, particularly on television or rebroadcast, I think those should be of substance and of matter to, to the public, and you still have the opportunity to work and fulfill your duties as commissioners, and for us the staff to do that, so I commend you on the transparency and the effort to work within this to make those meetings more productive.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes?
How many meetings would you say this, that under a normal month would this impact?
Well, obviously, your, your commission meetings, your Board of Commission meetings are still gonna operate as they are, the Zoning Board will still operate, and the Planning Commission will still operate. The other meetings would be open to the public, and my hope is that we have a few more work sessions along the way. We're growing, I want to put as much as I can to you, as quickly as I can, we're moving pretty quickly, and I think you're gonna need the opportunity to sit down and work through issues, so I would expect there'll be a few more meetings to come along, we'll go through the process of advertising them, but we're, we and the staff and I have talked about really working to move forward and give you the tools that you need to make decisions as a body, and I believe this will help you in that process. We're not gonna overwork everyone, we're not gonna abuse the ability of your time to have meetings, but we will get to the meat of some work when we, when we get there, and we hope that this facilitates that.
So just for clarity, you know, clarity, just, we would still have to advertise the meetings, we would still, you know, most workshops are gonna be called from a Board of Commissioner meeting or a Planning Commission, so the public would have plenty of proper notification if they...
Absolutely, as they do now, within every parameter of the law. No question.
Mr. Cantrell?
Thank you, Mayor, just, I appreciate the City Manager emailing me a copy of this and asked for my comments, and I did review it in great detail, and I think he did a good job of putting his thoughts into the resolution, and a good job of organizing the resolution, and I did do my due diligence on this, and there's, I think it's a good resolution, now whether you pass it or not, that's your call, but as to whether it's, it does anything, or even hints to anything that would violate the Open Records Act, I can assure you, it does not. It would not be a great appreciation... It would not be a great appreciable change, the only change, it would be, the people that see the advertisement of the meetings and want to come and attend will not be affected at all, I mean, they still can come, most of the time they don't participate in those, but that's the nature of a workshop, don't now. The only thing it would be, as Commissioner Crutcher was saying, it would give you a chance in a workshop, I think, to maybe take some of the tension off, because I know all of us, if we know somebody's looking at us, whether it's not anything derogatory to them or to me, but you're a little more, you won't be as much yourself and maybe be, feel as free to discuss things openly and with your colleagues as you do if cameras aren't rolling. But as far as legality of the resolution, it has no problem, it meets everything that even the Open Records Act, I'm sorry, the Open Meetings Act, Open Records wouldn't have anything to do with this, Open Meetings Act even hits to, so it's legally, it's a good resolution.
Any more? Yes?
Well, I kind of took a practical approach in trying to evaluate it, and I may be off a little bit, but it, I came up with that the impact would be approximately six to eight meetings per month that were previously done that weren't now done. And so, is that ballpark, you think?
Commissioner, if you're including the Tree Commission, the Beer Board, all of those things, if those, those would not be broadcast live, those would be open, but just not televised and re-aired.
Right. So if, those tend to run at least an hour, if not two hours on the average, and in order to do that, we have to have somebody here. So we're either paying them overtime, or we're paying them comp time or something to that effect, to be here to operate. And so, what, what, when you extrapolate all that out, it basically becomes that you lose three days' worth of somebody's staff time each year, I mean, each month, to broadcast those meetings. And then you put that on a annualized basis, you're talking about giving up a month of somebody's work, either through comp time or when we can't pay overtime, that sort of thing. And that's, that's a pretty good financial cost when we post the minutes of the meeting and the meetings are still open.
Yes, sir.
So, the comments not, that have been previously made notwithstanding, it, there is a, there is a chance here in terms of cost savings that's really tangible for the city on an annualized basis, that I think is a consideration.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, item E, discuss and take action on Beer Board seat opening and Park Commission seat opening, and that is me, and we just continue to have that on there until we fill these seats, and as of right now, there is no applicant, so I just really encourage you to put your applications in if you have an interest in with the city, because we'd love to fill these seats and have as many citizens involved as possible.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Excuse me. On the Park Commission seat opening, is that, did the gentleman that we appointed, is he not going to be able to do that? Is that what happened?
Um, no, he decided that, for, you know, there were emails that were back and forth, he decided at this time, if, at first, he, when we had to come back and do the at-large seat, he wanted us to make sure we did it right, and we did, but then as time passed, he decided that he had other things going on, I encouraged him to apply, but he didn't at this time. So, but he said he would still love to have some input on the Veteran Park and stuff like that, be a part, so at this time, it's just opened it back up to the at-large seat. And so if anybody wants to apply, we would love that. Okay. Okay, nothing else to discuss? Item 11, City Manager, item of discussion, miscellaneous updates.
Mayor, Councilmembers of Commission, two things for you tonight, first, I put in front of each of your seats a little small bumper sticker, I took the liberty of changing some of that, where on the seal, instead of "City of," it says "Welcome to Fairview," and in the line where it says "Progress and Prosperity," it has the city's website. Just a little simple advertisement you could stick on a window, a bumper, something, that's not intended to be a rebranding of the city, it's just an inexpensive way that, to see that we could do some of those things for not a lot of cost. Each of those stickers that you have in front of you cost 24 cents, so as we were to go through and make some changes of that, those are just simple things that you could do. We did not want it to look like it would indicate that a vehicle was a city-owned vehicle with that, but it also gave the ability to kind of look, so that's really just for your enjoyment, where I put some on the table out there, but just a small token of an idea of things that you can do to kind of garner some positive attention and maybe get people to look where they didn't have the opportunity to look before. So that's the small thing that you have before you. The second item that you have before you is a little more detailed, and I'm not asking for any action on this tonight, but I do want to give you some information regarding something that, a couple of things we've been working on. We've kind of taken a look at all of the city's resources, we're doing some financial planning now, Mr. Doherty and I met, gave me a wealth of information Wednesday, and we're going over some things to address, one of those things that we need to address is the city fleet, I know there was some discussion about that in a meeting we had previous to this. What you have in front of you on the first two pages is a listing of every vehicle owned by the city of Fairview that I'm aware of, this is through every department with every assignment, and it has on those two pages, everything that we own. Part of my concern, and I have two specific to this, the first concern I have is the use of private vehicles from city employees who are doing routine tasks on behalf of the city, doing inspections, going to the bank, going to making visits or other things that we need to do, there's inherent risk to the city with employees using their personal vehicle for that, travel training is another. I don't believe, rightfully so, there's an appetite by the commission to make direct new purchases for vehicles right now, so this, as I'm about to present to you, gives us a brief reallocation of some resources that will help us get some use of some things over some time. The first page that you see is all police department vehicles, and this is every vehicle owned or assigned to the police department currently. The second page that you see outlines vehicles to all other departments, the Fire Department, Parks and Streets, Code Department, and Admin. As you, as you're aware, we are currently advertising for a codes inspector, we currently don't have a vehicle for a codes inspector to drive in at City Hall. The second thing we don't have at City Hall is a vehicle that could routinely be used by some of our staff for basic travel back and forth throughout the city. In an effort to reallocate some of the city's resources and not expend any more dollars than necessary, I went back and looked at the list that we have, and most of our vehicles are in the police department. The 2014 Ford Interceptor Patrol vehicles were purchased by the General Fund, and those are owned by the General Fund. There's also owned by the General Fund, currently assigned to the police department, a 2008 Dodge Durango that could be reassigned anywhere in the city. We've reassigned that vehicle to City Hall, so that we'll have a vehicle here that could be used for general purpose. As we go down the list, one of the things that I looked at was the reassignment of vehicles to City Hall that could be repurposed. I identified two of those that could be repurposed. The first of those is the second vehicle on your list, it's a 2010 Ford Escape. It was purchased by the Drug Fund, has, it's six years old, it has 36,904 miles, we can reassign that to City Hall with some work to be done, and I'll explain that in just a moment. The second vehicle we have that we could apply or move to City Hall currently would be the Dodge Durango, we don't have to go through any, any work to do that. So, and below that, you'll see the third section, or the third lowest section you have here, and this is every vehicle we have that's a seized vehicle. They're outlined there, and I can tell you that, we'll run down the list of those seized vehicles, it's a 2012 Nissan Frontier, 2008 Chevrolet Impala, 99 Ford Explorer, 96 Ford Explorer, 2004 Ford Taurus, which is inoperable, 97 Ford Escort, I believe, inoperable, a Nissan Versa, which is really a hazardous disposal, that was a rolling meth lab that we need to remove from the fleet for safety purposes, we cannot repurpose that, but we need to move it out of the fleet. The next vehicles you have are 2000 GMC Yukon, full-size, 2002 Pontiac, two scrap vehicles from the 70s, a 2005 Ford F450 Command Vehicle that's out of service, and a 2004 Interceptor that will likely be sold, it was involved in a crash, will likely be refunded that amount through insurance. I give all that information to tell you this, what I would like for you to consider, and this is a legal purchase, there's no issue, the 2010 Ford Escape has been fully depreciated by the city, we run a five-year depreciation, that vehicle is depreciated to zero depreciable value from the city, but it still, in fact, does have some market value. Also, as you move back down the list toward the bottom, I believe it's about number eight or nine from the bottom, there's a 2006 Ford Expedition, also purchased from the Drug Fund, that has been temporarily assigned to the park. Under the provisions of our purchase for vehicles for the Drug Fund, you can resell vehicles purchased from the Drug Fund to the General Fund. If you establish a fair market value, you can, you can resell those, and I'm proposing in just a minute, a price that we can resell those to the General Fund, so the General Fund can get use of those without having to purchase new vehicles. It just didn't make sense for me if we have serviceable vehicles in our fleet to make new purchases, where we can repurpose these and get more use of the vehicles and still work within the parameters of the law and save money at the same time. I'll get to those two pages in a few minutes, and again, I'm not asking you for anything tonight, we can consider this at the next meeting. The other vehicles that are listed as seizures, we're going to take them out of service, bring those to you as surplus, and sell those. Under the law, if a vehicle is seized for drug purposes, it can be used for drug enforcement or drug information purposes for a limit of up to five years. If you get the vehicle and it's not put into use, the requirement is you must sell it. If you have it for any purpose of use for up to five years, at the termination of five years, you must sell it regardless of the application. Given where we are, I'm going to bring to you that we surplus those seized vehicles through GovDeals or some other approved purchase or sale, all of the proceeds of those sales for all of those vehicles will be remitted to the Drug Fund. Those would not come to the General Fund, those would go to the Drug Fund. So anything that is Drug Fund purchased to be auctioned or seized to be auctioned would go to the Drug Fund for Drug Fund purposes, as clearly is, is within the law and we would expect to do. Any item on here that's General Fund that we proposed to sell would be sold in the same manner, and the General Fund dollars would be remitted to the General Fund, and those could be used for the purchase of any vehicles that we would need to purchase, as long as the money allows, and we're not using tax dollars to do that, we're effectively reusing the same tax dollar, if we can sell these items and get them out of inventory. So when we, when we come to the next meeting and we have a list of vehicles to surplus and sell, this is how I arrived at that list, and if you would just, over the next couple of weeks, look at the list and see. In, on page three of the items that you have, I have listed before you the 2010 Ford Escape that I previously mentioned, that was brought into, it was purchased on July 7, 2010 for a purchase price of $20,759. Again, it was purchased by the Drug Fund, the audited depreciated value on a five-year depreciation, as we do, is zero. To err on the side of caution, I'd appreciated that vehicle out, because it's a Drug Fund purchase, I'd appreciated that vehicle out on a 10-year straight-line depreciation, and the 10-year straight-line depreciated value would be $8,304. For the estimated market value, the next page you have in front of you is the NADA Market Guide, where I pulled the values of that, and the first value that you see on the bottom left, value of that, based on the condition of that vehicle is $8,575. So my suggestion, so that we can get the future use of that vehicle and be within the law, is a proposal I have to you at the next meeting that requests the General Fund purchase that vehicle from the Drug Fund for the amount of $8,575, with those funds to be remitted from the General Fund to the Drug Fund, so that the funds are properly, properly accounted for, and we can get the future use of the vehicle without a new vehicle purchase. The second vehicle on that list is the 2010 Ford Expedition. It's fully depreciated at five years for our purposes, to err on the side of caution, I'd appreciated that vehicle out to 10 years on a straight-line depreciation, the straight-line depreciation value was $2,461. The last page of the items that you have are the NADA value for that vehicle, it's listed at $4,575. The issue you have with that valuation is, NADA only reduces the value of vehicles they appraise to the XLT model, in this case, this vehicle is one level below the XLT model that's police service, and it's not available for retail. If you go back to the page that has the two vehicles, I took the average of the 10-year depreciation, depreciated value, which is clearly fair, combined with the estimated market value of one vehicle model greater, and that suggested value is $3,568. When we arrive at the next meeting, I'm going to request that the General Fund purchase from the Drug Fund these two vehicles for a total of $12,143, which gives us, clearly within the parameters of the law, we can repurpose that Expedition to the park, and it will be legally and fairly used within the park, rightfully owned by the General Fund, and the 2010 Escape would be assigned as a pool vehicle to City Hall, so it could be used in lieu of city employees using their own vehicles for city business, which clearly, for a variety of reasons, is not, is not really in the best interest of the city or the employee. That's a lot of work to repurpose two vehicles, but I believe in the interest of taxpayer dollar and trying not to make any new purchases, I believe this is a good way to go. This list also highlights the need to make some changes to our take-home vehicle policy, which I'll also have to you at the next meeting, but if you look at the first page that I provided you, the, the General Fund vehicles, in this case, the 2014 Ford Interceptors, are listed, and they have the mileages out beside them for the accumulated mileage to date. Those range from 49,000 miles up to 59,000 miles, with the least mileage of one of those vehicles at 27,000 miles, I believe, which indicates we're putting some miles on these vehicles in a short period of time. My suggestion is to park these as part of what has been a take-home vehicle policy, I know that we've historically done that in lieu of benefits for some employees, we're looking at an ability to offset some of that cost to the employee that still is a savings to the city. So when we bring this back to you, I'll also bring that, for the purchase of these vehicles, I'll bring that back to you, so we can make some compensation to the employee for what has been a benefit, which clearly has been deserved, but in essence, or in effort to preserve the fleet, treat the taxpayer and the employee fairly, I believe we've hit a middle ground that we can show. hit a middle ground that we can show to give us the ability to do that and save dollars long-term. So, that's really informational, it's more informational than you hoped you'd have for something this simple, but we want to let you know that the staff is working hard to maximize our resources, and this is just a simple effort in that. And I'll have that information back to you, more, more for a vote at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. City attorneys?
I have nothing further than that, Mayor. Just want to thank the commission for their attention to the comments that we had tonight regarding the various and sundry legal issues. Thank you, and that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Bassell?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Crutcher?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. And I didn't say it earlier, but we obviously are missing a couple commissioners. I think they both had some family things go on, one, family-related thing, so apologize on their behalf for not being here, and that's it. Have a great evening. If I can get a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Thank you.